All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, March 13th, 2024. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning Board of Appeals here by notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, March 13th at 2024 in the James H. Junior Hearing Room on the second floor of Town Hall at 367 Main Street, Hyannis. I will start with an introduction of board members. Herb Bodensee.
Here.
Paul Pennard is absent. Aaron Webb is absent. Denise Johnson's absent. We're expecting Mark Hanson, but he's currently not present. Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny Alves.
Yeah.
And I am Jacob Dewey, Acting Chair. Please note this meeting is record, this meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. Seeing none, we don't have any minutes to approve today, so our first order of business is old business. Appeal number 2023-034, Bay Ridge Realty LLC has applied for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B, Section 20, 21, 22, and 23. The applicant proposes to construct 14 housing units, 24 bedrooms, within four detached buildings and associated parking and site improvements on a 3.95 acre lot for rental purposes in accordance with MGL Chapter 40B 760 CMR. The unit mix shall consist of six one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. Four of the units will be restricted as affordable for low or moderate income persons. The subject property is located at 900 Old Stage Road, Centerville, Massachusetts, shown on Assessor's Map 192 as parcel 001. It's located in the Residence RC Zoning District. This was heard and then continued from November 8th, 2023, and continued again January 10th, 2024, and continued February 7th, 2024, with the members assigned Herb Bodensee, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, Mark Hanson, and Manny Alves. We did receive a letter from Attorney Freeman requesting this be continued to April 10th while they resolve some, some further issues with the Health Department. So I need a motion to continue.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that is continued. Moving on to appeal number 2023-044, George and Deborah Alleage Allegro have petitioned for a variance pursuant to Section 240-13E RF1 Bulk Regulations Minimum Side Yard Setback. The petitioner seek a variance to construct an unconditioned screen porch over an existing patio 12.6 feet from the lot line where 15 feet is required. The subject property is located at 202 Seaview Ave, Osterville, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 138 as parcel 014. It's located in the RF1 Zoning District. This was continued from January 10th, 2024, January 24th, 2024, February 7th, 2024, and February 28th, 2024. And we have a request from Attorney Schultz to continue this again. What date did he want?
March 27th.
Okay.
He was requesting.
All right. No members have been assigned, so I'll make a motion to continue this to March 27th, 2024.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is also continued. Again, appeal number 2023-045, George and Deborah Allegro have applied for, to modify special permit number 2016-018, modification number three, to allow for the construction of a screen porch over an existing patio which would increase the lot coverage from 16.2% to 18.3%. The subject property is located at 202 Seaview Ave, Osterville, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 138 as parcel 014. It's located in the RF1 Zoning District. This also was continued from January 10th, 2024, January 24th, 2024, February 7th, 2024, and February 28th, 2024. And Attorney Schultz would also like to continue this to March 27th, 2024. Do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that is continued. All right, moving on to new business. Appeal number 2024-002, TFG Hyannis Hospitality LLC has filed an appeal of administrative official's decision in accordance with 240-125B1. The appellant seeks to overturn the building commissioner's determination dated December 12th, 2023. The project is outside of the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district, and the proposed solar arrays are ground-mounted solar arrays, not permitted on the property. The subject property is located at 35 Scudder Avenue, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 289 as parcel 110. The property is located at the Residence B, RB Zoning District. We did get a letter very late in the day today from Attorney Cox asking to continue this while she resolves some issues with the building commissioner, or possibly find a resolution not needing to come before us. Do you have any questions? Everyone see the letter? So, to what date did, what she?
April 10th.
April 10th. Okay.
Motion to continue till April 10th. Appeal number 2024-02002.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So that is also continued. All right. Moving on to appeal number 2024-004, Lorraine Samuelson Segal has petitioned for a variance pursuant to Section 240-13E Bulk Regulations in the RC, RD, RF1, and RG Residential Districts. The petitioner seeks a variance for a six-inch encroachment into the front yard setback. The subject property is located at 7 Glen Eagle Drive, Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 191 as parcel 166. It's located in the Residence C, RC Zoning District, and the Resource Protection Overlay District, the RPOD. So sitting on that will be all of our members present. Come right up when you're ready, Ms. Samuelson.
We need that right before.
Oh, just push, there's a little button on the microphone, right in the middle there. Just push that and the green light should turn on. Right below the green light says.
Push. Gotcha.
There you go. We're good. Thank you.
You'll probably have to speak right into the mic.
I'm the property owner of 7 Glen Eagle Drive in Centerville. I am not a year-round resident, but my son Cory is a full-time occupant, and he takes care of the property on my behalf. I am here tonight seeking a variance for six-inch intrusion into the front yard setback. My property is a pie-shaped lot on the corner of Old Stage and Glen Eagle. Last year, my son inadvertently created an issue by constructing what he termed to be a simple storage shed utilizing the existing exterior wall of the workshop. It was later determined to be an addition and not a shed in accordance with the State Building Code definition. This determination thus required a building permit and not a shed registration. During the application process, the local inspector noted the six-inch intrusion onto the front yard setback. Both my son and I were unaware that the shape of the lot triggered two front yard setbacks required 20-foot and not the 10-foot side yard setback. We assumed applied. It is our desire tonight to obtain the necessary relief to be able to maintain this space as supplemental storage. To my knowledge, there have been no complaints or questions concerning the structure or its placement. I am happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much. Sam, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just a quick one. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Beyond the, the relief for the variance, have all other, with regard to the building department, have all other sign-offs taken place, or like, have you gone through, have they been through there, and have they determined that all other, you know, plumbing, electrical, whatever might have been there, signed off?
I have the, I just have information on a three-prong test for this.
There is a building.
Just come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Yep, thank you.
This is my son.
I'm Cory. There is a building permit that the building inspector is holding on to. Depending on the outcome of this meeting, so if we are granted the variance, the building permit will go into effect.
Okay, thank you.
Manny, go ahead.
I guess I had a question about which side lot we're infringing on here. You mentioned a 20-foot buffer, but I'm looking at the plot plan.
Mm-hmm.
And the shed.
Maybe Mark can explain it to me.
It's right here. I believe on 7B.
Yeah, it's 7B, right. It's between Old Stage Road and the corner of the existing garage. It's 19.4.
It's supposed to be 20.
It's 19.4. Got it. Understood.
Thank you.
You answered my question. Thank you. You mentioned the shed because there's, there's a structure in the, in the plan that that's entitled shed. I thought that was the one we were talking about. Got my question answered. Thank you.
I guess, so the existing dwelling was built, because that's also 19.2 off the road, which that's front yard there, too. But that was pre-existing.
Non-conforming.
I assume. But it was built in 84? Is that what it said?
The property is a pie-shaped lot, and it's situated on the corner of Old Stage Road and Glen Eagle Drive. It was developed with a single-family home and a workshop created by a previous owner. The official address is assigned for the both of them is, by the post office and the fire department, is 7 Glen Eagle Drive. The surrounding lots are typically square and rectangular, rendering this lot unique in shape.
So I guess in 1983, that, those setbacks weren't required when that house was built? I guess not.
No, it would have been, would have been pre-existing.
In the 70s, but must not have had that.
And it doesn't look like the, the garage with the shed is any bigger than the main dwelling?
No.
Okay. I guess we just, we need to remember this is a variance, so we need to make sure we satisfy the three-prong test. So I would just encourage any board members, if you have questions or thoughts around satisfying that. You ask any questions?
Any complaints from the neighbors?
Yeah, I don't think so. So we'll open for public comment. Does any member from the public here like to speak to this? Anna, I don't believe we received anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So it closes public comment, brings it back to the board for deliberation. Does anyone have any thoughts? I mean, it's, it's very minimal. However, it is a variance, so we need to take it as a variance. It is a unique-shaped lot in the neighborhood, so I think we could find on the basis of lot shape affecting just this lot in the neighborhood. The hardship, I think we need to find here that the use, that it's necessary for the addition, that the addition was necessary. What exactly is in that? It's just storage?
It's an, it's for outdoor equipment and recreational vehicles that do not tolerate the, the constant exposure to the environment, the weather.
Okay. Was there any change, any landscaping because of it in terms of the buffer between Old Stage Road and the building?
Not at all.
Okay.
So as shown, is still, is still there?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a tree line, or is that a hedge line?
Just come up to the microphone.
Shrubs.
Scrub.
And another question. So there was no infringement. Health Department hasn't had any issue with distance to the leach field? Anything along that line, or have you not got that far?
No, there hasn't.
Okay. It's not habitable space that they're expanding?
Well, there is, there's plumbing in there, correct?
No.
There's no plumbing? Okay.
No, there's no plumbing, no electricity, no nothing.
Okay.
And was this built on a foundation, or was it built on pilings, or?
It's built.
Thank you.
It's, it's built on pilings and a slab. So it meets, I talked to the building inspector about it, and he said that met the minimum code, that there were pilings underneath the slab that were poured integral with the slab, so they're, they're all tied in together.
Okay.
I was under the impression that under 200 square feet, you didn't need a building permit. I didn't realize when I attached it to the shop that it became an addition. So, you know, I measured, you know, five or six times from the edge of the road to, to the edge of the, the shop, the workshop, and I kept coming up with like 32, 33 feet. So I thought I was a foot beyond, and the surveyors came up with six inches closer to the line than I should have been.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the other hardship here would be in requiring the applicant to demolish it, right?
Yeah, but we don't, we've always, you know, held off on, we don't want to set that precedent that, you know, people build and ask for forgiveness rather than for permission, so.
Correct.
Granted, I mean, I understand this was a, you know, unintentional consequence here. But I don't know that we want to hold to that in our findings. I think it should really be, the necessity, you know, was determined for storage, and it was the most logical place to put it on the lot. Does someone want to make findings? Mark, do you want to make findings, or?
What, what would we have for the second prong?
Literal enforcement of the provision that zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial, otherwise to petitioner. I think, you know, we, I mean, on one, I think we could go both structures or land, because the structure was already in place, and it made sense to attach it to the other structure. And, I mean, I think the hardship would be location on the lot.
So in looking at the drawing, there really is, I mean, you, you have to say a certain way, distance from the field. There was already additional structures. There really was no other place to put that.
Yeah, I mean, if it went on the other side of the, of the existing garage, it would have been hitting the shed, and it would have encroached sort of into the deck area. So I think it's.
Maybe the inability to create the, the structure.
To create needed storage.
Yeah.
Larry, any comments from you?
I have one.
Just turn your.
The question about the building permit.
Yes.
Okay. That's, you applied for one, you got one, and now it's in.
It's in, it's in place. We're just waiting for a finding from you. And if we're granted the variance, then the building permit will go into effect.
So, right now, I believe you said there are no utilities?
There, nothing.
You plan on having utilities?
No.
It's a shed.
Yeah.
You need a flashlight to get in there.
My, my, my problem was I attached it to a building, which, because I was under the impression, you know, when I did the shed, that under 200 square feet, you don't need a, a building permit.
You were correct.
So the shed that I built on the side of the shop was 12 by 16. If I was aware that I needed a building permit, I would have went the length of the, the building.
It existed, yeah.
You know, to get more space. But I kept it at 12 by 16, which is under 200 square feet. And my only mistake was that it's attached to a garage, basically.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
And it's not intended, you're not using this for a home occupation or anything of that nature?
No.
It's just for personal items?
No.
Okay. I mean, I would consider maybe adding a condition in there for potential future owners or future occupants that, you know, it's not to be used for business purposes. I don't.
I mean, matter, you know, I, I told the building inspector when I met with him, I'm like, you know, with the new building code and, and it's all up to code. And I'm like, okay, so in a hurricane, my house will blow away, my shop will blow away, but at least I got a 12 by 16 place to put a cot, because that'll stay there. It's like, that's the code.
You do understand, though, that an approval of a variance here, that's where it ends for us?
I, I understand that.
We don't, that doesn't, you know.
I understand.
Building Commissioner still has his purview on that.
Correct.
Okay. Just so it's clear.
Yeah. Yeah, this, we're just giving you the six inches. Everything else goes back to the building commissioner.
Okay. You know, it's still, you know, to me, it's still on my property. I'm just six inches closer than you want me to be.
Yep, exactly. Yep. No, we just have to follow the letter of the.
I, I understand.
Of what our powers are, and our powers to grant a variance require very, very specific requirements, so we're just making sure we can check all the boxes.
Yeah.
And, and also a variance continues on to the property, so if you guys don't own it in 50 or 100 years, the variance will still be in place. We have to make sure we put conditions that would.
Right.
I won't be here in 50 or 100 years.
Mark, do you want to make findings?
I'm good with 20.
With regard to variance number 2024-004, Segal, Section 240-13E Bulk Regulations in the RC District, to allow the newly constructed addition to the existing garage 19.4 feet from the front yard setback where 20 feet is required. Lorraine Samuelson Segal has petitioned for a variance pursuant to Section 240-13E Bulk Regulations in the RC, RD, RF1, and RG Residential Districts. Petitioner seeks a variance for a six-inch encroachment into the front yard setback for a recently constructed addition to the garage. Subject property is located at 7 Glen Eagle Drive, Centerville, Mass. Statutory, statutory requirement for MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, for granting a variance is a three-prong test. Board is required to find that each of the following three requirements has been met in order to consider granting the variance. Number one, owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. I find that the parcel is located on a corner lot oddly shaped, technically, I guess trapezoidal, with two front yard setbacks making it different than the other properties in the area, which, with a buffer, which does not clearly indicate where the, where the boundaries were at that time. A literal enforcement, number two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial, or otherwise to the petitioner. The situating of buildings and current structures would have made it extremely difficult to place any structure that would have been able to house the storage of the owner's assets.
I think it's really to expand any structure, because there's probably room to put another structure, but none of these structures could be expanded to accommodate.
Correct, correct. So I, I, as, as described, an expansion of the structure would have been substantially difficult, given the location of the other structures and the mechanicals fields within the property boundaries. Number three, desirable leave may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. Where, petitioner is asking for a minimal setback allowance. There is, they're not increasing habitable space or, or anything physically as far as appearance that would be a detriment to the, to the neighborhood or the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Those are my findings.
All right. So a motion to, Mark's saying a motion to approve the variance based on the findings presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then conditions, Mark?
Have you had a chance to look at the conditions? Number one through five is presented in the staff report, or would you like me to read them?
What report?
Do you want me to just read them?
Yeah, I might as well read them. There's only five.
Okay, no problem. So there's five, there's five variance conditions, and these will be the conditions under which you must abide with this variance. Number one, the variance number 2024-004 is granted to the Lorraine Samuelson Segal to allow the newly constructed addition to the garage to be 19.4 feet from the front yard setback where 20 feet is required at 7 Glen Eagle Drive, Centerville, Mass. Number two, the site development should be constructed in substantial conformance with the plan entitled Existing Condition Site of Number 7 Glen Eagle Drive, Centerville, Mass. by Down Cape Engineering dated January 12th, 2024. The proposed development shall represent full buildout of the lot, and that means anything else that you would want to modify on this lot, you would have to either come back to the board if it wasn't something by right.
Correct.
The proposed development shall represent full buildout of the lot. Further expansion of the dwelling and/or construction of additional accessory structures is prohibited without prior approval from the board. All mechanical equipment associated with the dwelling, air conditioners, electric generators, et cetera, shall be screened from neighboring homes and the public right of way. The decision, the decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, and copies of the recorded decision shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals office and the building division prior to the issuance of a building permit. The rights authorized by this special permit must be exercised within two years unless extended. I'd like to add, number six, that this addition not be used for further home occupation or business uses without prior written.
Without coming back to the board?
Coming back, without coming back to the board. Sorry.
Are those all agreeable?
That's very fair.
All right. Vote on the conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you have your, your variance.
Thank you very much.
So good luck with the building commissioner and finishing up all those other fun little parts and pieces.
So we have the variance, so tomorrow I could call the building inspector.
Yeah.
It will have to be recorded, I believe, before, and there may be a.
Anna will prepare the.
I will draft the decision, and then it will be signed and clocked in at the clerk's office.
Okay.
There'll be a 20-day appeal period.
Okay.
After the 20-day appeal period, then you'll be sent the original decision for recording at the registry of deeds, and that's when it's done.
That's when I can go to the.
Yeah.
Building inspector and say, come and look at it.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
All right. Correspondence. We had none on the agenda. We received something very late in the day today.
There was a Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah.
Cancellation of meeting.
Yep. And then, what was the other thing? Wasn't there something?
Yeah.
Yeah, cancellation notice, the Cape Cod Commission meeting for Thursday, March 21st, 2024, 3 o'clock was canceled. And I guess that is all. Oh, and there's an upcoming community meetings for the LCP, the local, the local comprehensive plan. There's village meetings, April, Village of Barnstable, April 2nd at 6:00 PM at St. Mary's Episcopal Church. Village of Katuat, April 3rd at the Freedom Hall in Katuat. Village of Marston's Mills, April 10th at 6:00 PM at Liberty Hall. Main Street, Marston's Mills. Village of Centerville, April 11th at the Centerville Public Library at 5:30 PM. Village of Osterville, April 24th at 6:00 PM. And at the Osterville Public Library. And West Barnstable, April 29th at the West Barnstable Community Building. And Hyannis, at the Barnstable Adult Community Center, April 30th at 6:00 PM. Our input, and I think community members' input, is encouraged for those meetings. Any matters not reasonably anticipated?
No. Is the 27th getting full?
The 27th currently, after tonight, has six items on the agenda, and April 10th have five items on the agenda.
And is the 27th in?
Zoom.
Is it Zoom?
Zoom.
Yeah. Okay.
Six on Zoom.
So, yeah, upcoming hearings, we have March 27th, 2024, Zoom, April 10th, 2024, in person. in person, April 24th, 2024 on Zoom. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Someone want a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.